Good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and call the City Council meeting for March 21st, 2011 to order. First thing on the agenda as always is roll call and the determination of the quorum. Charlene, if you would, please.
Peterson. Wyffenbach. Davis. Hadcock. Kroger. Costello.
Here.
Quaker.
Here.
Wa. Brown. Mason. We do have quorum.
Thank you. Just a reminder, if you do have a cellphone or a pager, we would please ask that you take that out, put it to the polite or the vibrate mode, or turn it off. If you do get a phone call during the meeting, we would ask that you actually exit through one of the doors and actually take it outside so you do not disturb the rest of us in the meeting. We would certainly appreciate that. Also, if you wish to speak on any issue tonight, there are speaker request forms. They look like this. They're to your left, my right over on the media table. If you would please fill that out, put your name, and also the item that you wish to speak to. That way, as we make our way down the agenda, we'll make sure we do not overlook you. And next thing on the agenda as always is invocation. I would ask Pastor Matt Spidley to give us our invocation. He is from First Assembly of God, so everyone please rise and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor.
Let's pray. Father, of all the places in your world, you've privileged us to live in Rapid City, and we take a moment and say thank you that you've privileged us to be a part of this great city. We give you the thanks, Lord, for those who serve in the administration of this city and leadership, and we give you the thanks for them tonight. Lord, we thank you for concerned citizens who have come out to share their opinions on issues. And Lord, now as we turn our attention to the issues at hand this evening, God, we ask for your wisdom, for your direction. Lord, we thank you that we live in a country where we can gather together and express our opinions. Lord, we ask for good decisions tonight that will benefit our city for years to come, and let us leave this place with a heart of unity for our city. And we give you the thanks in Jesus' name. Amen.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Say, Jeff, could you do me a favor? We're getting some feedback from one of the rooms back there. Can you go down, see if you can turn that down? Next thing on the agenda as always is the adoption of the agenda. Are there any additional items that need to be added to tonight's agenda? So please turn on your light. Let's go to all the women. Deb Hadcock.
Two things, if I could, Mayor. The Martinez Boxing Club, just some info, and then petition signing, just info for the public.
Signing. Very good. We are going to call that Item 73A and 73B. Any additional items? Let's go to Alderman, Aaron Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to add an item, raising hens for eggs in Rapid City.
Hens for eggs.
Thank you.
We will call that 73C. Any additional items? Any additional items? If not, the chair will look for a motion to approve the calendar or the agenda as published with the addition of 73A, 73B, and a 73C.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for the February 28th, 2011 special council meeting and the March 7th, 2011 regular council meeting. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We are on to awards and recognitions, and I'm going to ask Dean to come up and join me. There we go. Well, it's always a pleasure and an honor to recognize those that have sacrificed so much for our country and basically put their lives and really the welfare of their family on the line, serving in the armed forces. And tonight is no exception. This is our Veteran of the Month recognition, and in partnership with the Veterans Coordination Commission, we're pleased to present the March 2011 Veteran of the Month recognition to Dean F. Wilcox. Born September 29th, 1924, in Belmont, New York, Dean joined the United States Air Force in January of 1942. During his tour of duty, he served on two different destroyers, the USS Isakowei.
Cowie.
Okay, very good. From October 1942 to August 1943, and the USS Terry from August 1943 to August 1944. After sea duty, he was assigned to the San Francisco Bay Area aboard tugboats. He participated in the North African invasion, the Battle of Atlantic, the Solomon Islands Campaign, the Mariana Island Campaigns, the Battle of Imajima, the Battle of the Philippine Sea. Well, you were busy, weren't you? For his actions and participation, he received, among others, the American Campaign Medal, the European African Middle East Eastern Campaign Medal with one star, and the Asiatic Pacific Campaign Medal with five stars. After discharge from the Navy, Mr. Wilcox worked at various jobs until he enlisted in the United States Air Force. Wow. In 1950, as an airman, third class, which is an E3, he trained in the communication field and stayed in that career until he cross-trained as a facilities manager at Ellsworth Air Force Base in South Dakota. He was stationed at various bases throughout the United States and overseas. He retired August 1st, and I'm going to change this because it says 2973. So I think that's supposed to be 1973. We'll get you the right one there. I didn't think you were that old. From Pope Air Force Base, he also received the, let's see, among many things, and actually, for Pope Air Force Base, Carolina, at the rank of Master Sergeant, which was an E7. He received the Commendation Medal, the Good Conduct Medal with silver oak leaf cluster, one bronze oak leaf cluster, Longevity Service Medal or ribbon, and with a silver oak leaf cluster are among his many Air Force awards and decorations. Mr. Wilcox married Artis Gibbs of Charter Oak, Iowa, in December of 1953. They have two children, their daughter Cheryl and their husband Mike Trobeck, who lives in Denver, Colorado, and their son Timothy and his wife Terry, and granddaughter Chantel and Nicole also live in Denver. He belongs to the Kenny Lake Senior Citizens Center and also the Midlusa Senior Center. You like both of them, huh? Okay. He is an active member of TRIA, the VFW, and American Post 22. He served 20 years as a volunteer member of the Pennington County Sheriff's Office.
Twelve years.
Yep, very good. Mr. Wilcox, we have to correct a couple of things in here. Mr. Wilcox regards his proudest moment as the end of World War II and his role he played in it. Mr. Wilcox is to be commended for his service to his country. Thank you and congratulations. Tonight, we also have the honor of swearing in a new Assistant City Attorney, Allison Marshland. So with that, Pauline, why don't you come up here? Let's get a mic so you can watch your step.
I usually get back to it. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name. I, Allison Marshland. solemnly swear. solemnly swear. that I will support and defend. that I will support and defend. the Constitution of the United States. the Constitution of the United States. and the Constitution of the State of South Dakota. and the Constitution of the State of South Dakota. against all enemies. against all enemies. foreign and domestic. foreign and domestic. that I will bear true faith. that I will bear true faith. and allegiance to the same. and allegiance to the same. that I take this obligation freely. that I take this obligation freely. without any mental reservation. without any mental reservation. or for the purpose of evasion. or for the purpose of evasion. that I will faithfully. that I will faithfully. and impartially perform. and impartially perform. the duties of the office. the duties of the office. of Assistant City Attorney. of Assistant City Attorney. within the office of the City Attorney. within the office of the City Attorney. Rapid City, South Dakota. Rapid City, South Dakota. according to the law. according to the law. and to the best of my ability. and to the best of my ability. so help me God. so help me God. Congratulations.
Well, thank you, everyone. We certainly appreciate that. It's always a pleasure to honor those that have served our country and also those that are coming to work for the city of Rapid City. Next on the agenda is the general public comment period. This is the time for members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the council on any issue not on the agenda. Action will not be taken at tonight's meeting on any issue not on the agenda except by placement on the agenda by unanimous vote of the council members present. I do have one speaker request form. Jim Bussell. Now, we do time this, so we would ask you to come forward, identify yourself, and if you just watch the lights, there is a three-minute time period. With that, Mr. Bussell.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Jim Bussell. For those of you I haven't met, there's some new faces this year. I'm a firefighter medic with the Rapid City Fire Department. I'm also a member of Rapid City Professional Firefighters, IAFF Local 1040. I'm here this evening as the fill-the-boot coordinator. Annually, the Rapid City Fire Department, IAFF 1040, we do our fill-the-boot fundraiser for the Muscular Dystrophy Association. It's a three-day program where we go out and we work from parking lots in Rapid City and we collect money for the Muscular Dystrophy Association. It's a 57-year tradition between the IAFF and MDA, and Rapid City is proud to carry that on. A little background, last year, Rapid City, IAFF, and the fire department raised right around $38,000 for the Muscular Dystrophy Association. For the third year in a row, we ranked number one in our district and one of the top in the nation as far as the amount of money that we raised for a city of our size, for a department of our size. So we're very proud of that. Along with some other fundraisers that we held last year, I was able to present a check at the MDA telethon in Sioux Falls for about $45,000. So Rapid City has been very, very good to us with this fundraiser, and we're going to go ahead and do it again this year. So I'm here, this is just kind of a save-the-date announcement. Our fundraiser this year is going to actually be May 25, 26, and 27 in Rapid City. Locations will be throughout the city, and I will coordinate with the council and the mayor's office and send you emails to remind you of that. One of the unique things about our fundraiser here in Rapid City is we have 100% department support from the most junior firefighter all the way to the top of the department, the chief, and our members of our ambulance billing and non-uniform staff have come out and helped us. Even more impressive than that and more noteworthy is that we've had excellent support from the council, and as a matter of fact, we've actually had some of the council members that are sitting here this evening come out and hold a boot. The mayor has joined us, so we would just like to invite you to come out and join us again. It's going to be an outstanding fundraiser once again. We're very excited about it. We're going to do a home run derby this year at the softball complex to raise a little more money, and Alderman Hadcock, I hear you were a softball player once upon a time, so I'll save you a spot. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those right now. Otherwise, I appreciate it and thank you very much for your support over the last few years and look forward to it this year.
Say, Jim.
Yes, sir.
Did you get Sioux Falls mayor to pony up for a bit? I know that they didn't do it last year.
I knew you were headed there, and I was prepared this evening. Actually, I have a letter drafted for Mayor Huether, and I'll forward that to you so you can peruse it and make sure it's to your liking, and then we'll go ahead and push those buttons a little more this year.
And just so everyone knows, the bet is if Rapid City wins, he has to wear a Rapid City t-shirt.
That is correct.
Around for the day.
At a council meeting.
Yep. And of course, if Sioux Falls win, which I know they won't, I have to wear the t-shirt.
That's right. We'll make sure.
Of course, I might wear it inside out, but...
Whatever you have to do, so.
Thank you, Jim.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, I see no further comments as far as general public comment period. Is there anyone in the audience wishes to speak to any issue that is not on the agenda? If not, we will move on. We're on to the non-public hearing items, Items 4 through 73 inclusive. Chair will look for a motion, open the public comments on Items 4 through 53 inclusive. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Let's see here. We are on Items 4 through 53. I do not have any speaker request forms, I do not believe. I do have one speaker request form, and that was on Item 30, but only if it gets pulled from the calendar. So let's see if it gets pulled, and if it does, then we'll give her the opportunity to speak. Seeing none, chair will look for a motion, close the public comment periods, Item 4 through 53. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. We're on to the consent calendar. The consent calendar is Items 4 through 48 inclusive, 4 through 48 inclusive. Are there any items that we need to pull from the consent calendar? If so, please turn on your light. Let's go to Alderman, Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to pull Item Number 43.
Okay, got it. Item Number 43. Any others? Let's see. We need to pull Item Number 8 also. Any others? We are dealing with Items 4 through 48 inclusive, and so far, we pulled Items 8 and 43 from the consent calendar. Let's go to Alderman, Sam Quaker. Item 30. Got it? Any others? Any others? If not, the chair will look for a motion to approve the consent calendar, Item 4 through 48 inclusive, with the exception of 8, 30, and 43, please. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We are on to Item Number 8, which is a public works item, and we will go to our chair, Alderman Sam Quaker. Could you please read that in?
Thank you, Mayor. Item Number 8 is to deny a variance request to waive the sidewalk requirement, 820 East Boulevard. Per the Rapid City Municipal Code, move to acknowledge the applicant's withdrawal of the request.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and that motion is to acknowledge the applicant's withdrawal. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. We're on to the legal and finance committee's consent calendar, Item Number 30, and Alderwoman Deb Hadcock, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Number 30 is to acknowledge the future land use recommendation, zoning information, South Belly Drive, and I move to acknowledge the future land use report recommendation.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? As I mentioned, there was a speaker request form. Let's see. Mrs. Ruck, did you want to speak at all or not? That is correct. Okay. Thank you. Motion on the floor is to acknowledge the future land use recommendation. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. We're on to Item Number 43, please. Alderwoman Hadcock, if you would.
Thank you. 43 is to approve Resolution Number 2011-031 of intent to enter into a lease of land with Rapid City Arts Council Incorporated pursuant to SDCL 9-12-5.2, and I yield the floor.
Okay. Could we have a motion, please? We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on the motion, and the motion is to approve, and this is a resolution of intent. This is not the lease itself. This is resolution of intent to enter into a lease of land with the Rapid City Arts Council. Let's go to Alderman, Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. There was some confusion about this item, and I just want to make sure that this was clarified before moving forward. I do have a question for our city attorney.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Mr. Green, is this resolution, I noticed that it has time 10 days prior to a hearing after the resolution is adopted, so will it be time for the Rapid City Arts Council to negotiate any other issues that they may want to with the city?
Mr. Green, city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, all this resolution does is establishes the time and place for the hearing on the lease. If, for some reason, the next council meeting, between now and the next council meeting, there's not enough time for them to have all the discussions that they want, the council could certainly continue the item at that point as long as you wanted to allow as much time as necessary.
Thank you. And just for further clarification, this is basically just to set the time for the hearing, just to negotiate.
Mr. Green.
It really doesn't have anything to do with negotiation. It's just setting the hearing. The hearing will be at the next council meeting, so there's two weeks that we'll intervene, and we can certainly have additional discussions if they're necessary.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is for approval. Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. That is the end of the consent calendar. We are on to the continued consent calendar. These are Items 49 through 53, 49 through 53 inclusive. Do we need to pull any of these? How about from the council? If not, the chair will look for a motion to approve the continued consent items, Items 49 through 53 inclusive, per the recommendations on the printed agenda. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Just take us to the end of the continued consent items. We're on to the non-consent items, Items 54 through 73, 54 through 73. Chair will look for a motion, open the public comment on Items 54 through 73 inclusive, please. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. There again, we're into the public comment period. We do have a number of speaker request forms. I'm going to take them in order of the agenda and also the order that they came in. Please keep in mind, we do time this, so it'll be three minutes, so if you'd watch the lights come up, go ahead and introduce yourself, your name, and the item you're speaking to. First item for discussion, Item Number 57, Hanny Shaffey. Item Number 57, everyone.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm talking on behalf of the appeal that was submitted on behalf of the St. Joe group on that site, and we have talked to the applicant who applied for a concession stand on the corner, on the southeast corner of St. Joe and Sixth Street, and that stand will conflict with the proposed structure that will be hopefully beginning construction either late this fall or early next year. And we discussed with the owner of that concession stand, and he agreed that he would work on moving that, from that location to the corner on the southwest corner, which is basically by Audrey's Bright Ocean. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have a speaker request form on Item Number 73, Patty Martenson. Good evening, Patty.
Thank you. I'm Patty Martenson. I'm the current project leader for the Vision 2012 project of the Adult Resource and Social Center. I would like to thank the mayor and the city council member for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'd like to single along Deb Hadcock for giving us the opportunity to come back here tonight. The council suggested two courses of action last time we were here for the group to consider. The first was to see if we could get Sandy Deagle of the Luke John LeCoover Foundation to facilitate a group of concerned citizens to form a needs assessment. We did that and formed a senior cooperative working group to develop a master plan and needs assessment to address the 50-plus population of Rapid City. This group is meeting two to three times per month. Sandy Deagle should be speaking to us a little bit about that. The second suggestion was to work with the Parks Department to see if the two groups could develop a cooperative plan and design at Roosevelt Park. With the formation of the senior cooperative working group, it was agreed that the Parks Department should continue with their separate proposal and present their shovel-ready project. The partnerships and information developed to support the original Adult Social and Resource Center plan having been lent to the larger cooperative would develop a more comprehensive study on how to best to meet the needs of the existing 50-plus community in Rapid City, best position the city and lay a strong foundation for the future, and meet the needs of the baby boomer generation, and attract more people to the community. I want to ask the council to consider courses of action and resources that might be available to support the development of the needs assessment and help the senior cooperative working group to have a shovel-ready proposal ready for presentation during the next round of Vision 2012. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. We also have a speaker request form from Wes Storm, Item Number 73. Oh, you guys both going to come up?
I have to have my right hand.
Van snuck in behind you.
I have to have my right hand man, Wes Storm. Just want to talk you a little bit about the recreation projects. I'm speaking for people my age. Now, there's a couple of you up there that would be my age to work with it. We're looking at gymnasiums in Rapid City, just so you know, and I don't think you want to know, but there are 46 gyms, gym floors, in the city. They're tied up every day from about 6:30 till at least 10 o'clock at night at the school. The floors that you built with the school city are tied up with the city from 6:00 in the evening until about 12:00. They're full every day. You cannot call and get a gymnasium after October 1st to be inside, just so you know. Our climate prohibits us from being outside from about Thanksgiving till about now, so it's about five months we're held captive. Seniors have no place to go to walk, to jog, except the mall and the Y. If you don't like the mall, that's one thing, the hard floor. If you don't want to join the Y, you have no other place to go. It would be advantageous for the citizens of Rapid City at our age to have an indoor place to walk, to jog, to use, but also give two more courts for the kids after the old folks are done by three or four, taking a nap. They could use it after school for rec. You still have to live, you can't find a gym for people to use. You need to think about that when it comes to that. I know what's another gym. That's County School of Mines, National College, St. Thomas More, all of them. Just want to let you know on that one. You can walk at Sioux Park, and the city and school put that together. It's a beautiful track. It's nice to walk on, except when it's snow and icy and cold. So some of you are grinning about that, but when you get my age, you want to walk and jog, and you want to be indoors, there are not many places to go. My assistant, Mr. Van Linnquist, will finish the three minutes. For a guy that stutters, that's pretty good.
Wes wanted me to go first because he was afraid it'd take him three minutes to get his name out. What I'd like to...
Van.
I'm Van Linnquist, and I'm the chairman of the Parks Advisory Committee. I'm here to speak about... I'm here to speak about the Roosevelt Center. Actually, what I really want to do is talk about something that didn't get built ten years ago, because Jerry Cole, and going through the files one day, ran across the architectural drawings for exactly what we've been proposing, the gymnasium. It was bid alternate number one when the swim center was built, and according to the records, that bid alternate came in at one-point-nine million, there was only one-point-eight available. So, it did not get built, okay? We're talking, this was two thousand and two. We've told you that the building, current building, has all of the infrastructure in for this expansion, and the reason for that is because it was the bid alternate. This document here will save us significant dollars when it comes time for design. Most of the design is done. The cost estimates need to be updated. There are minor modifications that have to be made. So, what I would like to, you know, request from the council is consideration of this proposal. We've waited ten years, okay? It's not a bid alternate this time. It is a standalone, ready-to-go facility, as ready to go as we can make it at this point, okay? What we're looking for is authorization from the council to proceed, so that we can help people out like Wes, and I'm right behind him, believe me, as far as having a place where we can expand the recreational programs, not for just the elderly, okay, but for all of Rapid City. Because when we talk about this facility, we're talking about multipurpose rooms, we're talking about being able to have expanded leagues, we're talking about tournaments, recreational programs, expanded fitness classes, and all of this is going to increase the utilization, that's going to increase the financial position of the parks program to be more self-sufficient than it is today. So, with that, I'd like to request your favorable consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a reminder, the process as far as approving additional 2012 projects, that would need to go through the 2012 Subcommittee. They would report back to the 2012 Committee as a whole, which is the council as a whole. If they accept their recommendation, then it'd come back to Legal and Finance, and then on to the city council. So, really, if you want to get together with Ron Kroger and Aaron Costello, they can probably give you the information as far as when our next 2012 Subcommittee meeting will be, but that would be the process.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Sandy Deagle, item number seventy-three. Hi, Sandy.
Hello, good evening. I'm Sandy Deagle, and I'm the executive director of the John T. Vakovic Foundation, but my role here tonight is to give you a little update on the progress of the Rapid City Seniors Cooperative Master Plan Committee. As Patty mentioned, in December, you asked them to contact me to help facilitate a community plan, or a unified plan, for the seniors of Rapid City. We have begun work on that, and we have broadened the group to about twenty-five diverse key stakeholders, and I'll get to that in just a minute on how we did that. But first of all, let me give you a little bit of context on the issue related to seniors. The definition of seniors becoming more complex. The variation in needs among the senior population is very apparent, as you look at the boomers, which are around the age of fifty to sixty-five, the young seniors from sixty-five to eighty, and the older seniors, eighty-plus. As they age, their definition of recreation, transportation, and activities also change. Trend data says boomers, for example, plan to work longer than previous generations, even though they have saved more. This possibility affects the area workforce and retail spending. Boomers may also play a significantly different role with their families, in that boomers may be caring for their aging parent at the same time as caring for their children or grandchildren, while also holding down a full or a part-time job. This affects the type of services needed in our community. Quality of life and health and wellness issues for the younger and older seniors also differ. Federal and state funding cuts create an increased demand on personal resources of the seniors. Access to appropriate healthcare, adequate meals and nutrition, recreation, and transportation becomes a greater concern to this population who wants to be healthy, active, and stay in their own home. Their needs are vastly different from those of the boomers. This planning process will take all of these variables into account and make recommendations for future services, facilities, or activities. The plan was formed with diverse stakeholders. There's three members from each of the senior centers, there's four members from nonprofit governmental agencies, there's three from senior healthcare facilities, there's three from the business community, there's four members at large, two from city council, two from city rec, and Patty Martenson, who is the leader of the Adult Resource Center of the 2012 process. We have met about three times, we've looked at other models of other city plans, we are looking at developing a needs assessment, and we have looked at what the desired outcomes of a plan would look like. The three committees that we've broken down into at this point are health and wellness, active lifestyle, and community design. The subcommittees will study their focus area and define the kind of information that they want to know from Rapid City citizens in general, not just the members of the senior citizens' centers. As previously mentioned, national trends indicate the variation in needs among the senior community, and it is extreme, so we will keep all of that in mind as we move forward on this planning process. Is there any questions?
Thank you, Sandy. And that, I believe, is all the speaker request forms that we had. Now, our procedural issue, the chair did not realize that someone was trying to add a fifty-seven A to the agenda. That was not added at the beginning. So, the chair will look for a motion to amend the agenda to include a fifty-seven A, which is to designate an alternative location for Site Five east of Audrey's Bridal and on the west side of Sixth Street, and there again, that was that issue that we were dealing with a little bit earlier. Now, just so you know, procedurally, it does take a unanimous vote of the council members to amend the agenda. If I could have that motion, please. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on amending the agenda? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, and we did add item number fifty-seven A. Thank you, everyone. Let's see here. Chair will look for a motion to close the public comment period on items fifty-four through seventy-three inclusive. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Run to ordinances, item number fifty-four, Alderman Hancock, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Number fifty-four is the second reading, and ordinance number fifty-seven thirteen, repealing Chapter one-point-zero-eight of the Rapid City Municipal Code relating to wards and precincts and adopting a new revised Chapter one-point-zero-eight of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item fifty-five, please.
Fifty-five is the first reading, and ordinance number fifty-seven sixteen, allowing fence height exceptions in second front yards by amending certain sections of Chapter fifteen-point-four-zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion, excuse me, we have a motion and a second to approve item number fifty-five, which is first reading, and ordinance number fifty-seven sixteen. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item fifty-six, please.
Fifty-six is the first reading, and ordinance number fifty-seven seventeen, and ordinance amending Section seventeen-point-oh-six of the Chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code rezoning the within-described property as requested by Spurlock Consulting Incorporated for OTS Incorporated for rezoning from general agricultural district to low-density residential district located along the agenda, about three miles, located west of the intersection of O'Vee Lane and Nugget Galtrow, and I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. This is item number fifty-six, which is first reading, and ordinance number fifty-seven seventeen, and you're not kidding, it's three pages long. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item fifty-seven, please.
Fifty-seven is appeal of the Planning Commission's decision on request by John W. Ashley to consider an application for a sidewalk vending permit for sidewalk vending location five located, let's see, more generally described as being a portion of St. Joseph Street, right away east of the intersection of Sixth Street and St. Joseph Street. Deny vendor location?
That would be correct. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second to deny vendor location. Keep in mind, item fifty-seven will be taken up immediately after, and that is reassigning a location. Any discussion on that motion? Motion is to deny the vendor location. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item fifty-seven A.
Thank you. Fifty-seven A is to designate alternate location for Site Number Five east of Audrey's Bridal, west of Sixth Street, and I move approval for new location.
Second.
Excuse me, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We are on, excuse me, on to the Public Works Committee items, items number fifty-eight. Alderman Quaker, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Item fifty-eight is to approve change order number one for Seco Construction, Inc., for Main Street Square Site Development, CIP project for an increase of fifty-eight thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. Move to approve.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman, Aaron Costello, I bet you're going to abstain.
How much did you bet?
[laughing]
I will be abstaining, as my employer is involved in certain aspects of this project.
Very good, thank you. Any further discussion? Pauline, just for a point of clarification, we're still on budget, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
We are.
Okay. Motion on the floor is for approval of the change order to Seco Construction for an increase of fifty-eight thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We're on to the bids. Pauline, number fifty-nine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item that we opened for bid is for well number eight, pump replacement project. This was opened on March fifteenth, two thousand and eleven. We did receive two bids on this project. The recommendation is to award the total bid in the amount of forty-four thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents to Lane Christiansen Company.
We have a motion and a second for approval to award to Lane Christiansen Company for a total of forty-four thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Next item is the North Pine Dale Reservoir for the Good Samaritan Society. This was also opened on March fifteenth, two thousand and eleven. We received four bids on this. The recommendation is to continue this to the March twenty-ninth, two thousand and eleven Public Works Committee meeting to allow the Good Samaritan Society an opportunity to review this.
We have a motion, second to continue this item to the March twenty-ninth. Is that Legal and Finance?
Public Works.
Public Works Committee meeting. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Sixty-one, please.
Sixty-one is the Capes Water Main Extension Project. We received four bids on this. It was also opened on March fifteenth. The recommendation is to award the total bid in the amount of seven hundred and six thousand seven hundred and eleven dollars and thirty-five cents to Hill's Materials Company.
We have a motion and a second to award to Hill's Material Company for seven hundred and six thousand seven hundred and eleven dollars and thirty-five cents. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Gary Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I will be abstaining from this motion, as my brother-in-law is the superintendent for Hill's Material.
Oh, very good. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is to award. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item sixty-two, please.
Sixty-two is the Dias Avenue and Beale Street Overlay Project. We received three bids on this. It was also opened on March fifteenth. Recommendation is to award the total bid in the amount of sixty thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars to J&amp;J Asphalt Company.
We have a motion and a second to award to J&amp;J Asphalt Company for a total of sixty, is that sixty thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item sixty-three, please.
Item sixty-three is the Rapid Creek Trunk Sewer Manhole Rehabilitation Project. This was opened on March fifteenth as well. We received two bids on this. Recommendation is to award the total bid in the amount of two hundred and seventy-nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-one dollars to Hill's Materials Company.
We have a motion and a second to award to Hill's Materials for two hundred and seventy-nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-one dollars. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Brown, I assume you're going to be abstaining again?
Yes, sir, I will be abstaining.
Okay, very good. Who are we missing here? Where's Mr. Jordan? I'm doing a head count here, we don't have enough folks up on the agenda, or up on the dais here. Okay, now, well, but to spend money, you need six votes. Okay. Motion on the floor is to award to Hill's Materials Company for two hundred and seventy-nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-one dollars. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number sixty-four, please.
Item sixty-four is the pavement marking for Lane Line Painting Project. We received two bids on this. The recommendation is to award the total bid in the amount of sixty-four thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars to Dakota Barricade LLC.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to award this to Dakota Barricade LLC for sixty-four thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Sixty-five, please.
Sixty-five is for a new current model year tandem roll-off truck. We received numerous bids on this for various different models. Recommendation is to continue this also to the March twenty-ninth Public Works Committee meeting.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue this to the Public Works meeting on March twenty-ninth. Any discussion on the continuation motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Sixty-six, please.
Sixty-six is for water treatment coagulant for the Water Division. This was opened March fifteenth, two thousand and eleven. We received two bids on this. Recommendation is to award the total bid in the amount of twenty-nine thousand five hundred dollars to Camero Water Solutions.
We have a motion and a second to award the bid to Camero Water Solutions for a grand total of twenty-nine thousand five hundred dollars. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Deb Hancock.
Just some kudos to our water department. I watched the government channel, believe it not, the other day, and watched it almost all the way through about the tour and how our water treatment plant works. I have been on the tour personally, but if you want to learn about our water treatment plant, John Wagner gives an awesome tour and good information on our water treatment plant that is built in nineteen sixty-one that we are redoing, so kudos to our water division and John Wagner. It's very informational, thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is to award. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Sixty-seven, please.
Sixty-seven is for fluoride at the Water Division. This was opened March fifteenth, two thousand and eleven. We received one bid on this. The recommendation is to award the bid in the amount of eighty-five thousand two hundred and eighty dollars to Hawkins, Inc.
Do we have a second, please? Thank you. We have a motion and a second to award to Hawkins, Inc., for a grand total of eighty-five thousand two hundred and eighty dollars. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Ron Kroger.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Could you have Pauline tell me what kind of fluoride that is?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Teck over there to pronounce that.
Very nice try. Okay. Any further discuss, uh, any further discussion? Motion on the floor is to award to Hawkins, Inc. eighty-five thousand two hundred and eighty dollars. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Sixty-eight, please.
Sixty-eight is for chlorine gas for the Water Division, also opened up on March fifteenth, two thousand and eleven. One bid was received, so the recommendation is to award the bid in the amount of twenty-three thousand three hundred and eighty dollars to Hawkins, Inc.
We have a motion and a second to award to Hawkins, Inc. for twenty-three thousand three hundred and eighty dollars. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Sixty-nine, please.
Sixty-nine is for the odor control chemical for the lift stations, opened on March fifteenth, two thousand and eleven. We received two bids on this. Recommendation is to award the total bid in the amount of sixty-eight thousand six hundred and forty dollars to Hawkins, Inc.
Do we have a second, please? We have a motion and a second to award to Hawkins, Inc. for sixty-eight thousand six hundred and forty dollars. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number seventy, please.
Item seventy is for sodium chloride for the Street Division, opened March fifteenth, two thousand and eleven. We received a number of bids on this. Recommendation is to award the total bid in the amount of three hundred and fifty-nine thousand five hundred dollars to Nebraska Salt and Grain Company.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to award to Nebraska Sand, uh, see, Salt and Grain Company for a grand total of three hundred and fifty-nine thousand five hundred dollars. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item seventy-one, please.
Number seventy-one is for sweeper broom refills for the Street Department, opened up on March fifteenth, two thousand and eleven. Recommendation is to reject all bids and authorize advertising to rebid that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to reject all bids and authorize to go out for additional advertising authority. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all is in favor, sign, oops, I'm sorry, let's go to Alderman Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, if we could possibly get some clarification on why we're asking to reject all bids?
Yep, let's go to Dale Teck.
City engineer. It was found during the bidding process that the city has historically used a two-piece broom. It was found during the bidding process that the city can save money by going to a one-piece broom. The bid package we had out was for a two-piece broom. We're therefore going to reject all bids, re-advertise for the one-piece broom and save some money.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you, everyone. Motion on the floor is to reject and to go out, to authorize, uh, to go out for new bids. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item seventy-two, please.
Item seventy-two is for a new current year model wide area mower for the Parks and Recreation Department. This was opened on March seventeenth. Recommendation is to award the bid to Midwest Turf in the amount of forty-seven thousand six hundred and twenty-nine dollars.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to award to Midwest Turf for a grand total of forty-seven thousand six hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number seventy-three, which is a council item and liaison reports. This is the twenty-twelve funding request for the Roosevelt Park Field House and the Adult Social Center. This is what we actually discussed a little bit earlier. Um, probably for discussion purposes, the chair would look for a motion to acknowledge the reports, and then I think it'd be appropriate for them to actually talk with the chair of, of the twenty-twelve subcommittee. We have a motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to have clarification on the options that we have before us tonight. When I look at the agenda for December thirteen, a special city council agenda, it's my understanding that the items on that agenda had come from the twenty-twelve committee, and this item that's before us tonight was continued from December thirteen. So, I don't know that we would necessarily need to go all the way back through, um, the, uh, the process. So, I would like to have clarification on that, please.
Let's go to Jason Green.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, part of this item coming up, I had a conversation with Mr. Lundquist about this, which got me looking at that same set of agendas and minutes, and I believe that it's not necessary to go back to twenty-twelve on this item. You have the recommendation from the twenty-twelve committee. At this point, it is in the council's province, so the council could choose to add this to the five-year plan at this point. You could acknowledge the report, continue it, or you could simply continue the item for more discussion. I think those are the options that are available to you.
Very good. So, uh, this plan was actually approved through twenty-twelve already? I thought it was actually identified as part of the twenty-twelve as basically being an option. I didn't believe they actually approved this. If you go back to the twenty-twelve resolution, I do not believe that this was included. Is that correct?
This was not included in the five-year plan that was adopted by the council yet. However, it was a part of the recommendation that came from the twenty-twelve committee. Therefore, the twenty-twelve committee portion of the process has been satisfied. It's properly within the province of the council at this point.
Yep, very good. Thank you for the clarification. Let's go to Alderman Deb Hadcock.
Just a couple of things. I think, um, one of the, the Roosevelt Park Field House came up with a plan that they had found, so basically that needs to be discussed, and then, um, the Adult Social Center has a new team that they're working with, with twenty-five people, so there's a whole new ballgame going on. So, I think it needs to go back, um, and maybe, maybe to the twenty-twelve committee and have discussion, so we kind of know what's going on before we make any decisions tonight, because there really isn't a decision to, to make. So, I think acknowledging the report would be good, and then, um, Mayor, I don't know what we would do with the twenty-twelve, if we want the whole city council on that discussion, or, um, they just need time for both teams to get together and, and move forward on what they plan on doing. I, I think we know some of the information, but not all of it, so.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is to acknowledge, and as I mentioned earlier, probably the appropriate thing to do is, is have each one of these groups actually get together with, with Ron Kroger and Aaron Costello, our council leadership, will get it on to a twenty-twelve, uh, committee meeting agenda, so. Any further discussion? Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity. Uh, I guess I would have a question for Ms. Deagle. Ms. Deagle?
Or, oh, for Sandy Deagle? Very good. Go ahead and state your question, please.
Sandy, does this fulfill what you came here tonight for? I know that, uh, just moving this forward without anything, is it, does that fulfill what you guys were looking forward to?
We're really only at the point of providing information at this time.
Okay.
Our planning process is going to take longer than a few weeks. It, it's going to take at least a couple more months.
Okay. But, thank you, Ms. Mayor. I think, and I appreciate your involvement in this project, and I think that there may be a whole different outcome at the end, and I, it, it's something that's been needed to be done for a long time.
Thank you.
We appreciate it, and we appreciate Ms. Martinson's assistance, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is to acknowledge. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We also have a seventy-three A, which is Alderman, Alderwoman Hadcock, uh, with Martinez Boxing Club.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I had the honor of going to watch, um, some young men from our church in boxing, and it was down at the Martinez Boxing Club, um, and enjoyed the boxing for about three hours down there. It was pretty cool. There was both young men and women boxing, and, um, a lot of the kids, uh, teams from the reservations came down and, uh, just had an exciting time. Uh, people were very respectful. We had our ex-mayor Shaw, he was the announcer, and he was very, uh, good at announcing the kids, and the, it was just, uh, a very joyous time and a very honoring time as a council person watching them, and I, I just wanted to encourage the rest of the council to go down there because it's pretty cool. But, why I brought it up is, uh, they, they have some needs there. Um, I did talk to the Civic Center today, and I also went down, um, to one of the second-hand stores. They had a bunch of chairs, and they need tons of chairs, about three to five hundred folding chairs, and some other items that I asked some of my nurses and other people to donate, and I will get that list and put it out. But, um, it's a great pro, program. It keeps kids out of trouble, and if you want to go someplace that's real exciting and, uh, uh, very fulfilling, it's, it's a great place to go. Eddie Martinez is in charge of it down there, and he does a great job, so, um, just wanted to bring that up, and I thought it was something that, uh, the council needed to know about and something that they should go visit. Thank you.
We have a motion to acknowledge, please.
Still moved.
We have a motion and a second to acknowledge. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item seventy-three B is also Alderwoman Hadcock, uh, petition signing.
Thank you, Mayor. I thought, um, I had a couple people at the, the shop, more than a couple, um, ask about, um, the, the petition signing for the races, and I just wanted to know for the aldermen races and the mayor's races, um, I, and I still haven't found the answer, and Jason said he could bring it back, but I think it might be too late by that time. And I was wondering, um, by chance, Jason, or maybe that the mayor knew, how many times you could sign for the mayor's petition, because someone was telling me if you signed the petition more than once, then it was not a legal signature. And some of the people are telling people they can sign more than one petition for mayors or aldermen. So, um, if we have that information, I think we need to get it out there, because people do not need to be disqualified on their petition signing when they're working hard at getting this done, um, to run these races. So, um, Jason, if you might have some of that information, I would appreciate it for the people that are working hard, um, at these, uh, petition signing.
Jason?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I'm sorry, but I can't answer the question right off the top of my head. I can tell you that I don't believe this issue has come up during my time in the city attorney's office, but I would be happy to look into it and report back.
Why don't we do it this way, Jason? Why don't you, if you would, do the research, and then would you go ahead and forward, um, a memo to the council and also to the media? That way, it's out there.
Absolutely.
That way, we're not waiting for the next council meeting.
I appreciate it. If, if the media could put that out there, it would be huge for the people that are, are running these races, because, um, it's an exciting time for a lot of the new people that are running, and they really need to know that information. Thank you.
Okay, let's go to Pauline. Maybe Pauline hands the answer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, we go to election school every year to see what's new, what's not, get refreshed on, on some of the rules, and you are only to sign one petition for each race that is running. So, if you're in Ward One, you, at this time, being as we have a mayoral election as well, you can sign one petition for the Ward One Alderman and one petition for the mayor's race. If you happen to sign more than once, and if you sign on multiples, then it's one of those that someone would have to challenge the petition, and specifically that signature saying that I reject, or I, an affidavit saying that they've already signed multiple petitions, we would have to investigate that. If they have signed multiple petitions, then we would have to discount some of them. But, they are only supposed to sign one for each race that's being run.
So, the rule is if you are circulating petitions, get quite a few, quite a few more than fifty?
Correct.
Okay, very good. Oh, go ahead. Alderwoman Hadcock.
It's not who signed the petition first, because what if someone has fifty-three and they're running for mayor's race, and they're all legal signatures in a sense, but someone comes back and has those same signatures, or, or they're gonna, all those signatures are null and void if, if somebody else has that, those signatures on there?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Based on the information that has been given to us in this class, it is whoever actually files their petition first.
Okay.
Gets the, you know, gets the signature first, and not the date when they sign the petition.
Yep, very good. Anything else? And Jason, if you would, go ahead and do the research and send the memo out. Appreciate it. Thank you, everyone. We look for a motion to acknowledge.
Still moved.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to acknowledge. Alls in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We're on to item number seventy-three C, which was hens for eggs. Alderman Costello. I just read them like I see them.
And I appreciate you using the same vernacular I used. Um, by the title, one might think I intend on, uh, asking the council to bring this back, but that's just my attempt at a clever ruse. Um, I will no longer be pursuing an ordinance allowing citizens of Rapid City to raise hens for eggs for personal consumption, and that is not because the idea lacks merit. It is because the resistance to the idea is deep-rooted in misunderstanding, and education is required to overcome these misunderstandings, and this education will take time. Thankfully, there are many citizens interested in educating their fellow Rapid City residents, and I foresee this item coming before the council again when the time is right, and I hope that the council listens to the facts and is supportive. Thank you.
Could we have a motion to acknowledge, please? We have a motion and a second to acknowledge. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We're on to the public hearing items. These are items seventy-four through eighty-two, seventy-four through eighty-two inclusive. I have no speaker request forms. Chair needs a motion to open the public comment period, please. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. As I mentioned, we have no speaker request forms on items seventy-two, seventy-four through eighty-two inclusive. Let's go ahead, and at this point, we do leave, we do leave the, uh, public, uh, comment period open, so we're on to the continued public hearing consent items, items seventy-four through seventy-six, please. Yeah, and let's look to Patsy. Do we? Yep. Chair would look for a motion to, uh, approve the continued public hearing consent items, items seventy-four through seventy-six, as per the agenda. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We do have a late entry. We have Marion Ward, items eighty and eighty-one. Eighty and eighty-one, everyone. Uh, Marion, if you would come forward, uh, and if you just watch the lights, and you just please identify yourself, then the floor is yours.
My name is Marion Hansen Ward. I'm a Rapid City resident. Um, having just returned from Sioux Falls and realizing the first hearing has been held while I was gone on the TIF, um, the, and viewing the online video of both Wednesday and Friday's meetings, I've come to the realization that there are made, like fuzzy gray areas, and I think that a lot of the council people agree on this with the proposed TIF application. I would request that this item be continued until it could be clarified, and I would also propose that possibly a separate TIF to clean up the landfill area so that, as Mr. Shaffey stated, um, it will speak highly of our vibrant community. Although the TIF boundaries include the landfill, I couldn't find where there's any monies that are actually appropriated for the landfill improvements. Again, quoting Mr. Shaffey, let's put our cards on the table. After some research, I have found the landowner for the property of THF Stone Ridge LLC, the manager is, uh, Michael Stenberg, who is the CEO of THF, I believe. THF is the third-largest commercial real estate company in the nation. I do not think that they would qualify as a sucker developer, as Mr. Hanny stated, nor are they risking the loss of one and a half million dollars. Walmart has proven itself in Rapid City. Bring Walmart to the south side, but let's do it without our monies. Uh, in conclusion, please, please consider restructuring the boundaries for this TIF and rejecting the infrastructure improvements funding to meet the stipulations of an already approved final commercial development plan. And if there was time, I wanted to address the Rushmore Crossing is no comparison to this area, none at all. There's no residential area, there's no hospital. That area is all commercial development. Stony Creek is not a comparison. Katron Boulevard is not Fifth Street. Thank you for your time, and I hope, I really, really, really hope that you'll continue this until we can all become informed. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have a speaker request form from Hanny Shaffey, items eighty and eighty-one. There can, Mr. Shaffey, uh, please identify yourself for the record, and the floor is yours.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm just here to answer any questions that you may have, and I'll be in the audience just in case some of the questions you request my assistance in answering them. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have a speaker request form from Deb Baker, item number eighty, and I assume eighty-one. There can, Deb, if you please identify yourself for the record, and the floor is yours, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Deb Baker, and I live on Stumer Road. You know, this is, this TIF thing is, it's crazy. I'm a little concerned that the TIF was recommended by Marcia Elkins. You have fired her. None of you guys knew that was going to happen. I think it would be in the city's best interest for you guys just to take a few steps back and look at some of this stuff that was in the pipeline, the stuff that really does matter to the citizens of Rapid City. You know, I, I understand that South Rapid needs a Walmart, but this has always been said, this is not a Walmart TIF, this is a South Rapid TIF. I think it's a Walmart TIF, and every one of us know that. Walmart is a multi-billion dollar company. They originally come in and ask for four million dollars. Thank God for Jordan Mason, because I think that's the reason it didn't happen. What if you guys would have given them the four million? Wha, what if you would have? This has got to stop. Rapid City has holes in their roads big enough to swallow cars. We have school systems that are shutting programs down because we don't have the money. Stop it, you guys. Stop giving Rapid City's hard-earned tax dollars away. Stop it.
Thank you. I have no further speaker request forms. Anyone else wish to speak? Not, the chair would look for a motion to close the public hearing. Items seventy-four through eighty-two, please. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We are on to the consent public hearing items. These are items seventy-seven through seventy-nine inclusive, and the chair would look to see if we need to poll any of those. Jason or Pauline? Are we good? Very good. How about from the council? Not, the chair would look for a motion to approve the consent public hearing items, item seventy-seven through seventy-nine inclusive, please. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. That does take us the end of the consent public hearing calendar. We're on to the non-consent public hearing items, items eighty through eighty-two. Item number eighty, Deb, if you would, please.
Number eighty is the South Ryman's Dale Tax Increment, a request by Dream Design International, Incorporated for Stone Ridge LLC to consider an application for a resolution creating tax increment district number seventy-one, located east of US Highway sixteen, west of South Dakota Highway seventy-nine, and north and south of Katron Boulevard. I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, due to the nature of my business and a recent turn of events, um, and a business transaction that is taking place within this TIF district, I will be abstaining from this eighty and number eighty-one.
Tip, we will make sure the record reflects. Thank you. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is for approval. This is item number eighty. Let's go to Alderman Jordan Mason.
Yes, I, uh, have just a few questions, uh, to ask concerning, uh, both of these items. Um, and one of the first ones is actually just to clarify, um, the legal requirements for the tax increment financing, uh, district, and I guess I would turn to our city attorney to clarify, um, what requirements, uh, this app, applicant is looking under specifically.
Let's go to Jason Green, city attorney. Do you understand the question, Jason?
I'm not sure that I do. I, is this a question that references blight?
Yes, yes, it is.
In regard to blight, I believe the provisions on open areas is the section that the applicant is applied under.
Thank you, and, uh, after reviewing some of the material, um, I guess I'm curious to hear what the legal opinion of our city attorney is on this. what the legal opinion of our city attorney is on this tax increment financing district.
Well, can you ask him a very specific question? You're asking him for an opinion that the council is about to vote on. Is there something specific as far as a legal question?
Yes, specifically under the definition of nine-TAC, 11-TAC, eight, in dealing with the layout and the open area, with this tax increment financing district, I'm curious if, in the city attorney's opinion, if this meets the requirements.
Let's go to Jason Green, city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. As I provided my written opinion to the council, I'm going to remind you that this is a factual determination that the council makes. The legal definition is provided, and I'll read that. It's SDCL 11-9-11, and it says that any area which is predominantly open and which because of obsolete plating, diversity of ownership, deterioration of structures or site improvements, or otherwise substantially impairs or arrests the sound growth of a municipality, is a blighted area. The question before the council is whether you believe the condition of the property is such that it is substantially arrests the sound growth of the municipality. That is a factual determination to be made by the council. I don't vote on that, so my personal opinion really is irrelevant.
Yep. Mr. Mason?
Thank you. I guess I'm really just seeking legal advice on an opinion that I guess I feel like would have merit, given the South Dakota codified law. I guess I do have some questions to our growth management department. I am curious with the plating, if that, if that has caused any hindrance to the growth in the South Side.
Let's see. Let's go to Vicki or Karen, or Patsy, who wants to take that up. Vicki, please identify yourself.
Vicki Fisher, Planning Manager, Growth Management Department. And Alderman Mason, could I have you just clarify that question a little bit for me, please?
Yes, I do apologize for the ambiguity. Specifically, I'm asking with the layout and/or the plating, if there's any of those two that have actually hindered the development on the South Side of Rapid City in this TIF district.
Vicki?
The plating that the city has currently had before us, that is within the boundaries of the TIF district, have come forward with recommendations of approval that meet the city's street design standards set forth in the Street Design Criteria Manual, as well as the subdivision regulation. So there's no, there's been no delay or hindrance of those plots coming forward. Plots previous to that, that would be over on the east side of Fifth Street to some degree, no, again, as well. Those came forward and went through the system and had to meet those minimum standards.
Okay. Mr. Mason, you still have the floor, sir.
Thank you. The last question I guess I have also deals with the, this planning, then. So is there any, is there any other reason, actually, let me rephrase the question. Would we have to stick in the signalization and the turn lanes without Walmart if it was another business? Would we still have to make these improvements?
Let's go to Vicki Fisher.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When we reviewed the planned commercial development that was submitted for the Walmart site and the Too Many anchors, it was a requirement of that planned development that they submit a traffic impact study. That traffic impact study identified through their traffic engineer specific improvements that would be needed along the intersection of Stumer and Fifth, Fifth and Catron, as well as Black Hills Boulevard and Catron Boulevard. Those were needed in order for the store to open. And so when we approved that planned development, we did so with stipulations that did a bullet point presentation before the council that said, here's the improvements that are needed.
Vicki, I'm gonna let you finish up, but that would be the time. Go ahead and finish up. Your thoughts, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I just would like to note that a better person to speak to that tonight would be the consultant, Hanny Shaffey with Dream Design, and he might be able to speak more specifically to some of the background traffic that exists in the area that also goes towards the warrants of those improvements.
Yep. Thank you. Thank you. Alderwoman Hickcock yields her time, so, Mr. Mason, you have up to an additional five minutes.
Thank you. I guess I would direct that question to Mr. Shaffey for clarification.
Mr. Shaffey?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, there's, there is no difference if there is a Walmart or if there is any other retailer, or even a major office building, including a hospital. Those will generate traffic. The signals and the widening of Fifth Street, if you look at the traffic study, there is quite a bit of through traffic that is projected along Fifth Street, along Catron Boulevard. The traffic study has analyzed and has projected the traffic for the future based on a no-build option and a build option. If you look at some of the traffic analysis, the through traffic, I believe, for example, you take at the first signal along Catron Boulevard and Black Hills Boulevard, I believe the traffic study indicated that there is an increase from 575 through traffic to approximately 695, which is an increase of about 20% with the built option with a Walmart. I'm sure the increase would be probably there if there is any other development occurring on that site other than Walmart. The magnitude of the increase has not been analyzed as part of the traffic study, you know, if it was a different business. But definitely, if it was a different business, there would be an increase, you know, but it may not be as significant as Walmart. The need for the traffic signals has existed before when we did the original traffic study prior to a Walmart existing on that site, and those signals have been included, as a matter of fact, in the previous TIF, and that TIF has, you know, its time has expired. Those improvements have been bid before the expiration of that TIF. But due to the doubling of what have you, we eliminated those improvements from the previous TIF, and we're adding them into this TIF, and that's what the goal in this deal. Thank you.
Thank you. We're back to Mr. Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have one additional question for Mr. Shaffey. Given the legal requirements for blight, I was wondering if you also, as the applicant, had any opinion or anything to that effect?
Mr. Shaffey?
I'm not a legal counselor, but, you know, we had obtained a legal counselor's opinion in this matter, and they have indicated that it does meet the blighted criteria, you know, and the reason for those are basically the SDCL 11-9-10-2, and 11-9-10-2, and 11-9-10-8. And those are basically relating to the safety of the public, and the safety of the public, regardless if there is a Walmart or not, these improvements, if you analyze a traffic study in the year 2030, would exist even at a no-build option, where if, even if there is nothing developed on the site in the future, these improvements have to be in place. You know, so the existence of the layout and some of the turn lanes requirements, they are unsafe to the public, and the, the, and safety of the transportation system and the poor layout for some of the streets has created some need for additional improvements, and those improvements are public in nature, and they're all within public right-of-way, and they are all regional, and they are all public within public right-of-way. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jordan, you still have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I yield the floor.
Very good. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Item 81, please.
Thank you, Mayor. 81 is South Robbinsdale Tax Increment. A request by Dream Design International Incorporated for Stone Ridge LLC to consider an application for tax increment district number 71. Project plan for located east of US Highway 16, west of South Dakota Highway 79, and north and south of Catron Boulevard. And I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. This is item number 81. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman, Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to briefly use this opportunity to thank Alderman Mason for the tremendous effort that he put in to, to help this project plan be much more reasonable, and I want to thank him for his work on this.
Thank you. Any further discussion? The motion on the floor is for approval, item number 81. Seeing no further lights, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item 82, please.
82 is second reading of ordinance number 5715, and ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code rezoning the within described property as requested by CTEC Engineering Services for the city of Rapid City for rezoning from Park Forest District to low-density residential district located on Skyline Drive at Floorman Street. And I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. And just, Charlene, I just want to make sure on items 80 and 81, that you registered Alderman Wyffenbach as abstaining. Okay, very good. Thank you. Bill list. Pauline, what do you got?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The bill list before you is for $6,566,065.89.
Any changes?
Nope.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? And that motion is to approve the bill list for $6,566,065.89. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Mr. Green, executive session?
Yes, for the purposes permitted by SDCL 1-25-2.
Very good. Could we have a motion, please? If we have a motion, second to go into executive session for the purposes permitted by SDCL 1-25-2. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We're in executive session. Thank you, everyone. We need a couple more. Okay, Chair would look for a motion. Come out of executive session.
Second.
First?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're out of executive session. Chair, thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you. We adjourn.